Alrighty, Troy, you all set?
All set.
Alrighty. The time is six thirty-three P M and we are officially calling the City of Inkster Plan and Commission Meeting to Order. Roll call, please.
Mayor Nolan, excuse, correct. Commissioner Chisholm?
Present.
Commissioner T. Williams?
Present.
Commissioner Hayes Bradford?
Present.
Commissioner T. Hall? Excuse?
Excuse.
Commissioner D. Davis? Commissioner McDavid?
Excuse.
Commissioner A. Williams, myself, and then Commissioner Willis, also excused, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you. We're down to adoption of the agenda. Has everybody had an opportunity to review the agenda?
Yes.
Alrighty, are there any additions or corrections? Any corrections need to be made to the agenda? Hearing and seeing none, emote a floor. The floor is open for a motion to adopt the agenda. It's been properly moved and supported. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. We're down to item number three, adoption of minutes. Item three A, adoption of February twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five meeting minutes. Has everybody had an opportunity to review the minutes?
Yes, and I have at least one correction that I see.
Okey-dokey.
Um, and under present, I don't believe Willis is, is listed, and he was there.
I'm going to, uh, everybody's not here right now. That's a good catch. I'm glad you mentioned that. I know as we are moving forward with technology and stuff, a couple of things is that one, we have a sign right here that says, please speak directly into the microphone. Some people don't speak loudly enough. Um, and not necessarily for us up here to hear, but depending on what software we're using sometimes to compose meeting minutes and then when they go, are gone back through. So if it just got missed altogether, you know, unless you're actually physically sitting or watching the video again and going through stuff piece by piece, that could potentially happen. So just, I was gonna say, just make sure you speak up and I'll make sure, and then microphones are on, and I'll make sure I, uh, send a little reminder out too. Mine wasn't on, so. Present. Well, there we go. Great example. Alrighty, uh, so that correction there for, um, Mac Willis. Commissioner Mac Willis, okay. Any others? Alright, hearing none, the floor is open for a motion to adopt the meeting minutes with the suggested corrections. It's been properly moved and supported. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. We're down to item number four. This is the first hearing of the public for items not scheduled for a public hearing, but on the agenda. Tonight, we do have two items that are down for public hearing. And they are, both are on the agenda, so we will open that up at the public hearing time. And there isn't anything else on our agenda that could be spoke to at this time. And again, that is for items not scheduled for a public hearing, but on the agenda, and since we have nothing else, we will move down to public hearing. Item number five. The floor is open for a motion to open the public hearing. It's been properly moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes, public hearing now open. Our first item under public hearings is case number two-five dash zero-one text amendment. To add vehicle repair facility, major, as a permitted use within the B-three general business district. Conduct a public hearing for the consideration of amending the zoning ordinance to allow vehicle repair facility, major in their general business district B-three. Mr. Dowdell, you have the floor.
Thank you, sir. Good morning.
Good morning.
Monday. Good afternoon, evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Quick background on T A twenty-five dash oh-one. Um, the applicant would like to reactivate a former collision shop. Uh, that's located at three zero-one-nine-one Michigan Avenue, located in our B-three district. From reviewing, um, I was unable to find when auto, major auto repair was removed from B-three. But as it currently stands, we have several, um, facilities that are in the B-three district. As a, as a rule, the B-three, um, does allow for minors, uh, the basics. Get your oil changed, things of that nature, radiator flush, things of that nature, but major, um, is, is another number of, uh, different items. Uh, collision, paint shop, body shop, things of that nature. Um, our definition of repair, vehicle repair facility major. A place is defined as a business offering repair replacement services, including but not limited to steam cleaning, undercoating, uh, vehicle body repair, painting, tire recapping, engine rebuilding, dismantling, auto dismantling, upholstery, auto glass work, and such activated activities whose external effects shall adversely extend beyond the property line, but not including the sale of gasoline. So that's what our definition in our city ordinance is. As I stated, um, there's at least five, um, auto-related things, not, and that didn't include used car dealerships or anything of that nature that are in the B-de, the B-three district. And major auto repair is allowed via special land use in M-one. As it currently stands. So, um, being that the, the applicant would, would like to have it in the B-three district, it would probably be my, my recommendation, if you were to choose it, would be to have it as a special land use, because, um, minor special land use. So it would be item number forty-one of the special land use, um, one-five-five-dash-zero-four-seven, letter D, special land use permitted. Is majority of it, so, um, and looking at, at, um, you know, the potential use for major vehicles. Um, and if, if this is harmonious, harmonious with the, um, this master plan and the zoning. Could it be you, could it be, um, convenient for us, we, like I said, we already have at least five um, type businesses similar to that in the city. Um, in the past, we've had patterns for auto-related, specifically, uh, used car dealerships and not complacent to code. Um, so it's, it's been a little bit of give and take with, with people that, with, um, those type of businesses as far as making sure that they're keeping their licenses and things of that nature up to date. Um, but that, that doesn't mean that this, that couldn't happen. Um, and then I just wanted to point it out, point out, uh, March third, the, you know, the, um, city council enacted, um, moratorium on a lot of business that we have over saturation, um, say the least, and, and that was one that, that he chose to put a moratorium on, and that lasts for twenty years. But, but because this was already in the process, we were moving forward with, with their request.
Thank you, that was gonna be one of my questions. That makes sense. Okay, um, or is that everything you have at this time?
Uh, yes.
Okay, thank you. And is the applicant or representative on behalf of the applicant, applicant here? If so, please approach the podium and state your name for the record.
Alan Sabro. Three zero-one-nine-one Michigan Avenue.
How you doing?
Good.
Good.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening. So if you had any additional information that you care to, uh, divulge at this time, please feel free to do so to this body, and then, of course, we'll open it up for this body to ask any questions, um, comments or concerns, and of course, it's a public hearing, so the general the audience will have an opportunity to speak as well.
Good evening, everyone. My name is David Hashem, two-six-zero-five-one Michigan Avenue, um, as well with the applicant over here. So, uh, I would like just to point, point out that, uh, uh, the building used to be an auto shop, and right now what we're doing, we're doing a facelifting on a building, is gonna be looking awesome. Especially, this is gonna be almost the first or the second building entering into Inkster, and that will bring as well something nice to the city. Refacing the whole building to make it look nice. If you look over here, the first one is how it used to be. Currently, that's how it looks. In the summertime, when we're allowed, that's how it look, we'll do the whole facelifting on a building, and that would give it the different look of the building. If you have any question, we're here to answer any question you can have.
Alrighty, commissioners, at this time, do you have any questions, comments, or concerns?
I have a, um, question slash comment. So if we pass a moratorium, um, that prevents us from opening businesses like this, I don't understand how we can move forward as a commission and approving it if there's a moratorium on it.
Mr. Dowdell, you wanna elaborate? Cause I know you said that it was already in the pipeline, and the moratorium got passed, so.
Right. So a- as it stands, you know, the planning commission makes the recommendation to the city council, city council makes the final decision. Um, but as, to answer your question, um, because it was already in the process, it would, it would be exempt from the moratorium if it was to, to be approved.
Um, I do, I have a, a couple more comments, so, um, just to keep in mind our master plan, cause I know that's part of our consideration as a body. Um, the top priorities include having redevelopment housing and sustainable and resilient type businesses, mixed use. So our residents want, you know, a place for them to eat, a place for them to work, a place for them to, you know, shop other things. Um, I know that we've all heard from our residents that they are no, they're not interested in any auto-related businesses, especially on Michigan Ave, um, it's prime real estate. Um, I also counted at least one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine auto-related uh, businesses within Inkster, a couple of those on Michigan Ave already, including like O'Reilly Auto Zone. Um, and so, uh, some of the considerations there also include just the, you know, public health aspect of it, you know, air quality, pollution. Um, and I have a couple other where to go. Um, of course, we want a more balanced business ecosystem, and then, you know, the perception of blight, I understand that that's a concern. We don't want business, businesses just sitting idly by, but, um, I think if we refer to our master plan, we can come up with other ideas for what this could be, other than oil. And that's the end of my comment.
Alrighty. So just comments, no questions?
Yep, that's it.
Alright.
My comment. That area there already has, uh, got an auto repair place at the corner that I know of now. And the facility once was the body shop, once they did repairs there too. And I don't see nothing else further going east of that outside of any other lots. So I think it would be appropriate for them to have something like that in that area. It's just obviously rough, ain't nothing else there.
Okay. Anything further? No, alrighty. Commissioners? Okay. Alrighty, this, um, is a public hearing, so we, at this time, we will open it up to anybody from the general public who wishes to speak at this time. Please approach the podium and state your name for the record. That's where I drew a blank earlier when I was trying to say general public, and I was sitting here looking at the crowd like, general. Alrighty. Um, seeing and hearing and no movement. I guess at this time, we can go ahead and close the public hearing. Floor is open for a motion to close the public hearing, I'm sorry, close the public hearing for item number A.
Why don't you close the public hearing for item number A?
Support, it's been properly moved and supported. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes, item is now closed. We're down to item B. Case number two-five-dash-zero-three-two-six-one-seven, special land use, I'm sorry, two-six-one-seven, Middlebelt, special land use. Purpose of this hearing is to consider a special land use to permit special land use permit to allow for automobile service station and to allow for liquor, beer, and wine sales in the B-three general business zone district at two-six-one-seven Middlebelt Road. The floor is open for a motion to open the public hearing for item number B. Alright. I'm sorry. Motion. It's been properly moved, there's support? It's probably moved and supported. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Public hearing is now open for item B. Mr. Dowdell, you have the floor.
Okay, so with this situation, like, like the public hearing before, they were notified, notified in the, the, um, the local newspaper, as well as put on our, our city's, um, website. Um, this is a, a item that was tabled once before because there was a misunderstanding as far as their, their choice of use, they wanted, they originally had it just as a gas, um, gasoline or gas station, but they also wanted to sell alcohol, so that's why this came, it was tabled at our last meeting in February and brought back here, as well, as well as re, re notified. Light is, as you said, uh, two-six-one-seven Middlebelt Road, it's on the northeast corner of Middlebelt Road in Michigan Avenue. The applicant proposes a one-story, twenty-seven-hundred-ninety-nine square foot, um, site. Building, or, yeah, I guess building you call it, one point four-seven of an acre. Basically, um, when we do our special land use review, we, we look at about ni- nine things. And that, those things are, are harmonious with our, our master plan, in harmony with existing character and improvement to to the community, adequate public services, and things of that nature. Uh, one thing I did wanna point out was probably, um, number eight, which is enhanced health, safety, welfare, and morals characters and comforts of, and convenience. Um, in our findings, we, we said that, uh, automotive sta-, um, automotive station could provide convenience for the users of the station, is critical to acknowledge that while, while alcohol sales generate economic and certain social benefits, they also pose specific health and, um, social challenges, therefore, um, responsible regulation and education are essential to mitigate the negative impacts of alcohol consumption. And then this item also was, um, at the March third city council meeting, a moratorium on gas stations as well as alcohol, beer, and wine was enacted for one year. The applicant was submitted prior to implementation of the moratorium and therefore not subject to its restrictions.
Thank you. Um, is there anyone here on behalf of the applicant at this time? If so, please approach the podium and state your name for the record.
Good evening, my name is Zade from Z Eighty-Dime Build, representing, um, the owners of the gas station. Just as Mr. Dowdell, um, stated, this is an existing building, um, it's currently used as minor auto repair. If you guys have been by the site, it's in disrepair, honestly, the the pavement is not in good shape, um, the canopies for the old gas station that used to be there is still there. It's an old, small building, really low roof line, we're proposing to square up or rectangle, uh, the building, lift it up, give it a nice facelift. And then we're proposing to have, um, food, liquor, beer, and wine, and of course, four pumps, two on each side, enough for eight cars. Proposing ten parking spots, remove the entire, um, surface of the current state and replace it with brand-new six-inch concrete all the way across with new landscaping and, um, obviously, all-new interior build-out for the gas station, for the fueling station. And we're hoping to get your approval tonight. Any questions you have, I'll be happy to answer.
Fresh my memory, I believe you said at the last meeting that you guys are gonna repurpose the repair part of the gas station, correct?
Yeah, so right now it's two car, it's two garages, or three, and they're using it for, you know, new tires and auto repair, and, um, it doesn't look that good, right? So we wanna eliminate completely any auto repair and keep it just as a convenience store. There'll be, if you look at the floor plan, there's like a small kitchen in the back, but not a very big service counter, cause it is only twenty-some hundred square feet, it's not a very big building. Um, so when you walk in, there'll be, um, a display counter for food, and it'll be mostly, I think, twenty, I forget how many doors, maybe twenty-two doors. Um, like a walk-in, um, for soda, water, pop, energy drinks, deli, and then there's gonna be a five-door freezer, or four-door freezer, or ice and ice cream and frozen food, so it's a mini-mart basically in a way. And the, the site is gonna be well-lit, um, from a safety standpoint, as Mr. Dowdell alluded to earlier, uh, there'll be plenty of security cameras, the person that owns this building currently is a fueling station operator, he has quite a few stations around town and, uh, I think in Dearborn and some other spots. So he's ve- very well-versed as to how to run this store in a very, you know, professional manner, of course.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, Commissioner Hayes Bradford?
Well, as colleague has already stated, one of the things that we have in our community is an outcry against all the alcohol, the marijuana, and those types of things, and I think we talked this conversation quite extensively the last time you were here.
Yes, ma'am.
I fail to see how anything really has changed in what you're saying. I love what you're, you're wanting to bring, with the exception of that element. And, uh, and then even, should we even advance that up to, cause we realize we don't have a final say, but should it make it through to us? What precedent are we setting for our community? Because we have other gas stations who will probably be right back here, like, I wanna do it too. And then we've got another flood of this type of activity.
For sure, for sure. So I have nothing new to say, because when I saw last time, I stand by it, right? I stand by, I personally, and I can't speak for you or anybody else, I don't see a big problem with alcohol. I've lived in West Bloomfield, I've traveled everywhere, many cities have gas stations with liquor, it's not just, well, Inkster has one, I think, over on, um, Cherry Hill and Middlebelt. Um, it's like, um, there's a, a mini-mart that, that sells fuel, then there's the dispensary, and there's a food operator.
Cherry Bell.
Cherry Hill and, uh, Middlebelt.
Cherry Bell.
Thanks, and what's the, what's the name of that?
Yeah.
Cherry Bell, yeah.
Cherry Bell, yeah.
Yeah. So my presumption is maybe somebody will come and ask for it. I don't see it as a bad thing. So for instance, in a perfect world, if this property was big enough and, um, large enough, and someone was to tear it down and say, I wanna have a, a nice restaurant, but I have to, you know, to have a restaurant, a sit-down restaurant, you have to have liquor, beer, and wine. I don't see the difference between those two. As a matter of fact, I think the restaurant, I'll say, is, um, what about more, not using the proper word, a little more dangerous, because you're sitting there, you're drinking when you leave, let's be honest, you're a little bit drunk. Here, people are just passing by, right? They're picking up their beer, they're not drinking outside, they're not hanging outside, no one does that anymore. They're picking up their groceries or beer, really, most of the time, just gassing up. Um, it's, I wanna say, it's kinda necessary to have that liquor and beer and wine to open up fueling stations these days. It's almost like, I don't know anyone that's willing to open a beer and wine store anymore if they don't have the liquor. And liquor is sold at a minimum, everybody sells it at a minimum, so it's not like they're breaking the bank, they're not making a whole lot of money from the liquor. It just brings more foot traffic, and it helps with the fuel and everything else, and it helps with the, um, with how much the gas station is gonna be worth one day, right? So economically for them, um, it makes more sense to have liquor and beer and wine. And I'm just afraid if, if you guys say no, it's, I'm afraid the owners are just gonna leave it as an auto repair, and it's not like, um, you have to give me this for me to do that, it's just economically true. To do anything else with that site, aside from fueling station, just to do the environmental on that, God knows what's in there. Now, they're gonna do the environmental for a gas station, cause they have to, but I don't know that they'll do it for anything else. Like if it's just a two-store commercial retail building, that's not gonna bring, generate the income to make it worthwhile for them to go underground and dig up and spend all that money. So I have nothing new to add except for just what I said.
I have a question and I have some feedback. The first question is, um, do you know approximately how much you plan to dedicate as far as store space to potential alcohol, beer, wine?
Uh, yeah, I do, actually. So it's not much, cause it's a small store. So when you walk in, I'll tell you exactly how many linear feet it is. So one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. There are eight shelves at four feet, that's thirty-two feet, minus four, so it's twenty-eight, cause there's always at least one four-foot section that's dedicated to tobacco. And, um, you know, the vapes and all that good stuff that these places sell, so about twenty-eight feet, linear feet, um.
Is that maybe twenty percent of what's allocated to other thing, of the store, is that ten, is, you know?
That's way less, because if you look, if you look at my aisles, I got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Eight times four plus four. So it's not even twenty percent, because I have my aisles. Can I approach and show you? I'd rather you see it than. Four, five, six sections, that doesn't count, and this is all groceries, not perishables, perishables, so this is definitely less than twenty percent, this equates only by the
One C, one Bradford.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. I would say one, um, maybe fifteen percent. And if you count all of these in here, this is about twenty-four doors, plus a five, I'm sorry, five-door freezer, and there's some more, some more gondolas here in the front. So maybe twelve percent.
Thank you.
You want to see that?
No, I'm good with it.
So, um, I appreciate that feedback. Um, I think, of course, I'm not an engineering or a gas station owner expert.
You are mine.
Um, I understand based on the information you guys have provided us, that it will take a lot to get this property up to code, and of course, we don't want something sitting there um, that is not being used and contributes to blight towards our city. I understand there's really not a lot of alternatives other than making it a gas station, so I don't think that's quite the issue with that, but if it's that small of a percentage dedicated to your store, I'm also trying to make the link between how it would mean the difference between success and failure.
Mm-hmm.
And so, in addition to that, um, I think it's not just about, um, the convenience part, I think everyone understands, but I think also too, what we want is not for our Michigan Avenue, uh, section of our city to just be a pass-through. I understand that that's the nature of what you're offering, and I'm not saying that we have anything against that, but, you know, we are looking for restaurants and other things to kinda contribute to that area, so that people have a reason to stop and, and spend money in Inkster. Um, and so, with that being said, we have a lot, we have a variety of options when it comes to alcohol, we, when I do the numbers, we have one-point-six-seven liquor stores per square mile, which is higher than national average. The C, um, CDC considers moderate to be three to six, high seven to ten. Um, and so we have about seven, if not more, if you're considering the bordering neighborhoods that are comparable size that we have access to liquor to. We're not, we're not on shortage of having that as an option. Um, and based on what you just told us about how much small of a space you're gonna be contributing or dedicating towards alcohol, I can still see our residents or residents who are going to maybe Dearborn or to Westland or whoever, still stopping by your store and getting what they need. And I have a hard time making that, um, assessment or correlation that, that having alcohol will make or break the business. I'm saying, I'm not a, I'm not an expert on owning a gas station, but.
And that's a good observation, and I wish I had a study um, to give you to maybe help the point. The only thing I can speak to is just some experience from working, I've, when I was younger, I've worked in liquor stores, and I've worked in beer and wine stores, and they're just night and day. I don't know why they're night and day, I myself, I'm a liquor drinker, I don't drink beer and wine. So I feel like a lot of people are just like me, they're more of a liquor drinker, and it's just straight to the point, and it's, it's just easy and quick and gets you where you need to get to. Um, as far as, um, um, playing, uh, you know, having, wanting more restaurants, I feel like if this corner becomes, um, a liquor, beer, and wine, all intents and purposes, like a all, all in one purpose, um, sort of mini-market, gas station, it can, that corner now becomes a nice corner, because we have two, one nice-looking gas station right across the street, kitty corners and older gas station, brand-new dispensary with, I believe, second-floor office and a retail space, nice-looking, brand-new building, and now with, if we go through with this property, with this building, we'll have a nice-looking corner, it can only lend and help stretch the infill of what's, what almost looks like a cavities on Michigan Avenue, cause when I drive up and down Michigan Avenue, it's a beautiful road, well-paved, there's some nice-looking business, but there's a lot of I bet, well, I don't know if they're abandoned buildings, somebody owns them, they're not abandoned, it's just no one is doing anything with them, just like the building that's right next to us, which we tried to purchase and make this property bigger, but we weren't successful, unfortunately. Um, if this thing stays this way, I don't know that anybody else is gonna act, not to say that they won't, but I'm just saying, one brand-new building helps cater to another building, helps cater to another building, like if this goes up and it's a nice Like if this goes up and it's a nice-looking building, I feel like this person here next to us, which is to our east, will do something with that building. And it's not a good-looking building, but it's got a nice little property. And, um, yeah, I have no studies to say, and it's not so much the liquor. It is, you're right, it's like ten, twelve percent, but it brings people in, right? And, and the owners, you know, want, uh, want the liquor. It's important to them.
I appreciate it.
And I'm pretty sure the owners, I don't know this for a fact, they own gas stations that don't have liquor and beer and wine. And my assumption is that they own some that do have liquor and beer and wine, and they see the difference between the two. Plus the capital improvement, like how much the gas station is going to be worth with liquor and beer and wine. And liquor licenses are not cheap to build, I'm, I'm sorry, to buy. If I'm not mistaken, they're anywhere from two hundred and fifty to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to purchase. So you'd be saving on three hundred and fifty thousand if you denied the liquor, but I don't know that they'd go through with the project without liquor and beer and wine.
Okay, our point, if it doesn't, if the amount that you're selling is going to be that small, it's not going to make a big market difference in your outcome necessarily. Would that change your mind up the road to where that little part grows to a bigger part of your store?
What, you mean like to expand the liquor?
Yes.
Well, once you get a liquor license, you have the right to, unless you, unless it's stated in the approval from council that you can only have, and I don't know if this is, I've never incurred this before, but maybe they can say you can only have so much, so much percentage of your store to be liquor, beer or wine. Maybe council will state that, but, um,
It's not going to be a switch and bait, you know, you're like, oh, we're going to do this, and then you get in there and then
The whole store is liquor store, right?
Yeah.
I don't think they'll do that because they, they need, you've seen gas stations, nobody in their right mind, not, it's not good, but it doesn't make any business sense. And I'm not a gas, but station operator, but I do own businesses. No one would make their entire gas station liquor. First of all, they have a twenty-four-door walk-in cooler. Those are expensive, three compressors. Each door these days is about three thou, I'm a contractor too, so each, those doors are three to four thousand dollars a day today in today's inflation market. A five-door freezer, um, they need, um, candy and food and chips and sandwiches and, um, you know, what else is that? Antifreeze and oil, and that's why I designed those shelves in the front. Uh, they need ice and they need ice cream. That's what the freezers are for. Um, and, and no, they're not going to use the freezers to store liquor like some stores do. I've seen that before, but that's just a little freezer. I'm sure they, they're allowed to do that. But no, they, they wouldn't, they, they, they have to have, because the liquor is the liquor, right? It's just one little bottle, a pint, a fifth, a half gallon. There's only so much that they need. It's not a liquor store. It's not going to be a high-end liquor store. They just need the top-selling products to attract that extra fifteen or twenty percent of people that want to make it a one-stop shop, right? I want to get my liquor. I want to get my mixers. I want to get bread, some eggs, and I want to fuel up. If the liquor, beer and wine isn't there, then they're just getting groceries and fuel, and sometimes that's just not enough for some people. And you're saving people from having to make two stops, right? Liquor store and to come and fuel up.
Well, I get, I get that. So as a business, and I don't, I don't know who, which body would do this. Is it possible for us to have this in writing that it's not going to shift to something else?
So I was going to say, that would be something we'd have to seek, uh, legal advice on for the simple fact, um, I know former council member Williams had asked about one of the dispensaries with their phases. And they stated before us, and it's not saying anybody else is doing this, but they stated before us, we'd be doing phase one, two, three. Phase one is complete. They opened up and everybody's asking what happened to phase two and phase three? And we were told we can't force their hand because it was there, the opportunity for them to still expand. And when I say we, I'm talking about city council. The opportunity for them to still expand is still there, but it's not like a building is half-built or anything like that. It's just not developed yet. There was no deadline on it and things of that nature. So I get exactly what you were saying. I was thinking about that in my head. I said, that question has never come up, but it's something to explore. Um, because then it's, you know, that is both sides of it. You're talking about a regulation, absolutely. But then what happens, you know, if someone's trying to regulate too much or an applicant says, you're trying to under-regulate me now. I need to be up here, but you want me to be here and I won't be able to make a profit. So it's just something that we have to consider.
Well, that's what I'm saying. If you're, if you're saying it's not really, that's not your main focal point, would that be so hard to put in writing?
I guess, let me reiterate, what's the question exactly to put in writing, to be specific?
Well, and
Percentage of, of the
The store.
Store that's going to be dedicated to the sale of liquor?
Right.
Um, I mean, if, if, if it's legal by your guys' counsel, I mean, I don't really see an issue with it. I mean, it has to be something reasonable that, that we can,
Of course.
You know, work with. But back to somebody's point about like, why is it important? And what's going to stop us from having a whole full liquor store, everything of liquor? On liquor, beer and wine, the margins have stayed minimums. Seventeen percent is what you make on liquor. On everything else in the store, you make anywhere from fifty to seventy percent margin on everything else in the store. The reason that we require liquor in order to do this development is because liquor, beer and wine is what brings the traffic into the store. You have two other gas stations on the other corners. What's going to set this gas station apart from the other two? That's the biggest issue that we have in this development. And that's what'll stop us if we don't get liquor, beer and wine. Quite frankly, we're not going to proceed forward because we're going to just, the only thing we're going to do is steal a market share from across the street. And we're not going to spend millions of dollars just to steal somebody's small market share. It's, it's not going to be worthwhile or make business sense.
Well, I, I, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I get that. I'm a business person. I just know that what's not really written, people can just do whatever they want to do. It turns it. And I understand what you're saying and I, and I respect, I, I think that you would honor it. But I think if you're willing to honor it, then what would be wrong with putting it in writing?
We don't have an issue. We, we, as long as you guys can put it in writing, we don't have an issue with it, you know?
As long as we get a little bit of flexibility.
Yeah.
Of course, liquor sales are really great, and, but we don't want to go a hundred percent of this store liquor, but can we have like a ten percent plus minus?
Well, that's, what I'm saying is, for us to make a, a reasonable deal, we come back to the table and we keep talking until, it's not just what you guys want, it's also what we want. You know what I'm saying? And that's what I'm really trying to do. I'm trying to protect our interests, not just yours.
You're just afraid that what we, you give us the okay, council gives us the okay, we go in and the whole doggone thing is liquor.
Absolutely.
It becomes one of those, like, I know in the state of Colorado, every store is a one-hundred percent liquor store. Like there are no convenience stores. If you're, you're a store liquor, you have to be all liquor. That's not how we do things in Michigan.
But that's, that's regulated by ABC Alcohol Beverage and Control. That's different than the state. That's, that's state mandated. But he, one other thing that I wanted to address was, somebody had a question about what's going to stop other people from wanting liquor in their gas stations. I believe Mr. Dowdell stated that we are the last people that have applied for liquor before the moratorium went into effect. So it sounds like you guys are already handling that from a legal standpoint on stopping liquor stores from coming in. So that is going to stop other people from bringing other liquor stores into the community.
Is that true? Because Henry Ruff was also one of those applicants and we just denied them.
Yeah, we denied them based off of option, city council, I'm sorry, not planning commission. We may have recommended the now or whatever it was from planning to city council, but city council had the final say-so and they based it off of, I believe, items three, eight and nine on the special land use items, talking about it being harmonious with the community, um, so on and so forth. Um, those items are, you know, listed in your packet as well, but, um,
Isn't it the special land use too? Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
Well, there, this is going to have to go back to mayor council the same way.
Of course.
That's every, yeah, every special land use stuff.
I'm just saying, if we, if we have this extra language in there, they might be able to make.
I was going to say, whoever makes the motion, that recommendation can be in there, um, because again, it's just a recommendation. It's not the final say-so. And then council can, um, prior to that, the attorneys can review and the council will, you know, take up those matters regardless of however the recommendation comes out.
Yeah, as close as the attorneys will have to look at what we saying.
Yep.
We don't have an issue with that.
Okay. Um, council, I'm sorry, Commissioner Hayes Bradford, are you all set?
I, I don't think so.
Okay.
I, I really want you all to know, I understand from a business perspective, all of the digging and stuff that needs to be done to clear that. And I'm very concerned about it, the blight of that space. Uh, I've got family that lives over there and I would love to see something that looks good. I just want you guys to behave when you're in there. You know what I'm saying?
Operator is a great operator, actually. The person that operated, he has multiple gas stations and
He does. My partner, he, he has multiple gas stations.
That's his livelihood, his gas stations, and none of his gas stations are not run well.
Right? Well, and, and, and so with that in mind, we can come, we can strike a deal because I know the excavation of all of its tanks and all that stuff. I, I get that and we probably won't be able to do anything but, but gas station behind that. You guys are there. I, my feelings, well, it doesn't really matter right now. You know what I'm saying? I just, you know where I'm standing. I just don't want a big.
Understood.
It won't be, it'll be a mini-mart. It'll be a mini-mart where people can, and you know, it's, it's a fast link, Michigan Avenue. This is not like in the middle of a neighborhood. To me, it is harmonious with Michigan Avenue. Behind us is a lot of, there's a golf course on that side. There's a lot of greenery on that side. There's hardly, there's like one house that we knocked down on the door and no one answered. I don't think anyone lives there. Nothing much going on across the street. Kind of fits in within that corner. You know, if I were to come in with the same plan, right next to a neighborhood or right in the middle of Michigan Avenue, it, it just doesn't make sense. This corner makes sense for this gas station.
Excuse me for a moment.
Go right here.
Could you state your name?
Yeah, my name is Jason Atisha.
But, uh, Commissioner Williams, go on. I just have one last comment and I'm done.
Okay, and then we'll turn it over to the public from that point.
So you mentioned something, sir, that the, uh, of course, the, the sales are regulated. So is there a regulation in regards to how much can be established in a, a gas station as far as beer, wine and liquor?
Established from, from what perspective?
From a regulation process.
Like how, how much, how much liquor could we have inside the building?
Yeah, yeah.
Storage, no.
No.
In the back, you can have as much as you need.
No, no, no. I mean.
Be able to restock.
No, 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 no. Yes, meaning visible to public, not storage.
I, I don't believe that there's any kind of regulation, not that I'm aware of.
Except for what we're going to be talking about, which is, you know, let's keep it at this percentage plus for growth, maybe like another ten, fifteen percent for growth, just in case. But again, we can't grow too much because then we're going to eliminate the foundation of, of this kind of mini-mart gas station. If we become fifty, sixty percent liquor, it's going to kill everything else and we're just being counterintuitive at this point, we're counter, so we're okay to, you know, talk about percentages and with a little bit of growth, of course, just in case.
Right, but that, that's not my question. I understand.
There's no regulation.
Not as far as I'm aware.
Stand if there was any type of regulation because I know in certain elements, uh, it depends on the ratio and where, how many is already pre-existing, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. But if the, because it's going into a gas station environment, I didn't know if there was a separate additional regulation because you, you, you mix it, drink it and drive.
I, I will tell you this, uh,
Common sense at that point.
There is a rule from the Michigan Liquor Control Commission that requires a gas station that does sell liquor to have a minimum amount of inventory that does not include alcohol. So I think that would address some of your concerns. Um, yeah, I believe that the limit, we have to have two hundred thousand dollars of inventory that excludes alcoholic beverages. So that would, that would address your concern right there now that I'm thinking about it. Because we'd be required to keep that kind of inventory on hand for sale, we wouldn't be able to, unless we had, I guess, you know, two hundred thousand of inventory of, you know, non-alcoholic items. And then, you know, the rest, but it wouldn't make sense. You only have twenty-seven hundred square feet of building. You know, the, two hundred thousand dollars of other merchandise takes up a lot of room, you know what I mean? So that, that's another point that I wanted to.
That's why I've asked that question.
Now that you raised it, it came to my mind, so I'm glad you asked.
Yes, so, so that, that makes a big difference.
Absolutely.
Um, if, so you're required to have two hundred thousand in inventory outside of liquor.
Excluding liquor, yes.
Excluding liquor.
Yes.
That's it.
Don't quote me on the amount, I'm not going to lie. It's in the hundreds of thousands. I just don't know what the exact amount, yes.
But there, there is.
There is, there is some, yes, correct. Yes, there is. And it's, it's constant. There's inspectors that come out and they, they check in, they, you have to prove the receipts of purchases and everything. There's, there's all that out there.
Aside from the other many regulations, you know, as far as when you can sell, um, two P, two, two AM, you stop selling, you know, you can't sell up until, it has to be like eight AM or nine, seven AM.
I think it's seven AM, seven AM to two, you can sell from seven AM to two AM, which are allowed to sell.
And then, and, and of course, this is a precious license, expensive and it requires us working together. And rest assured, you know, the concern is always, will you sell to kids? You know, will you sell to someone who's drunk? No, because one strike, two strikes, you'll lose that license. You'll lose three hundred and fifty thousand in that gas station. It becomes not worth.
And it has an effect on every other license that we have.
That, that, exactly. So it's a.
And you guys, the city of Inkster Police Department, I was doing a search earlier on the Liquor Control Commission website. I was looking at all the liquor stores in your city, and a lot of them are in neighborhoods, from what I've noticed. And this is not that type of situation. Um, those type of stores attract the type of clientele that you guys are speaking of where there's people outside begging for money and things like that. This is not that type of situation. You know, this is, this is going to be a beautiful establishment. We, we take pride in everything that we own and it, it's going to be a beautiful site. I can assure you of that. But back to my, the city of Inkster does do decoys. They send in decoys under the age of twenty-one to see if people are going to sell. Some have, some haven't. It shows a whole list of everything on the, uh, MLCC website, if you search, if you, if you run a search, so.
So, I think, what, where you, um?
Um, well, I think that's it. Okay, so there, there, is there any way, uh, Derek, that we can find out what would be the requirement of, um, what the liquor control mission that, for the inventory, he's, like you said, he's just kind of quoting off of what he might have saw or something. Is there any way to know what is the actual requirement that, that they would be required?
If you'd like, I could step outside and make a phone call and get you the exact number. No problem. You want to step outside? No problem.
Be contacting our, our city attorney.
Well, I mean, on that aspect, but it, he just stated that the liquor control commission does require a certain amount of, of inventory to be all stocked, in stock, all the time, excluding liquor. So that would be a key component to know how much liquor can be even brought into the scenario. So I'm, I think that's, I would like to, I personally would like.
Alrighty, um, while he's getting that information, um, did you have anything further? No, okay, Commissioner Davis.
I was just going along with Derek said. They put a moratorium on it. And I don't see no other gas stations coming up with it, but I do see, I would like to see that area, that gas station go up as it is because got nothing over there except for gas station across the street. We get to slurp these and drink. Got the other gas station there, one piece of chicken something there. You saying y'all going to bring in some type of?
It's a little bit of hot food, not much. And I don't think we have.
Because your area, your area ain't that big, no way.
No, no, we don't have, we don't have room for a big cafe, you know, with the espresso machines and the slush machines and ice cream. We don't have that room. It's mainly really just, um, perishable, non-perishable liquor, beer and wine and hot food.
And then you got Ross, uh, H and H Metal, them battery place. I think, I like to see it developed and let them go ahead on form what they're going to do.
Oh, I'll let you go with your numbers.
So I called my attorney, he didn't answer, but I called a friend of mine who also has gas stations and liquor, and they have liquor license, and I also did a Google search. And he confirmed what it says. It says in Michigan, gas station seeking a license to sell beer, wine and liquor off premises, um, must maintain a minimum inventory of two hundred and fifty thousand at cost, excluding alcoholic liquor and motor vehicle fuel of goods and services marketed by approved types of businesses. So excluding fuel and alcoholic beverages, we have to have at cost two hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay, so that includes beer, wine.
It does not include it. No, it excludes it. It excludes beer, wine and liquor and, and fuel, and fuel.
So perishable, non-perishable.
Yeah, correct.
Food and ice and ice cream and frozen food and.
Yeah. Cigarettes and vape, yeah.
So that's at cost, not, not wholesale?
Correct. It, yeah, and, and what we purchase it for, not what we sell it for. It, what we purchase it for, at our cost.
Probably closer to four hundred thousand.
Correct. Yeah, probably about three fifty retail.
So what we're going to do is, Commissioner Davis, are you finished? You finished? Okay, let's turn it over to the general public for a minute. Oh, I'm sorry.
I just, it's going to be quick, I promise. So to everyone's point, I think we want, of course, the development because we want to see Michigan Ave starting to be redeveloped, and I think that's a concern. I just, I just want to put on record that I know that that's what we're considering because we, we have to consider what's in front of us now. And of course, what we hope to see in the future and how all of them are going to impact one another. And so, um, I guess maybe this is something we could find out more about. But if we're trying to prioritize things like grocery stores, which could also sell alcohol, or sit-down restaurants, which could also sell alcohol, you know what I mean? Um, and there's other things that people want, like banking, financial institutions, they want to repurpose some of these. You know what I mean? Um, and there's other things that people want, like banking, financial institutions, they wanna repurpose some of these lots. So on one hand, we get it, we want to see those things redeveloped or brought back to life so that we can start attracting other businesses. But do we know what our cap is as a city? Is it seventeen? Like, how many liquor licenses are we allowed to approve? And will that impact any future businesses that we might have or want in the future?
That's a great question. Um, I don't think it's anything anybody's ever really looked at, because you're right. If you go to a city that is. Uh, developing, like when I came through Canton earlier today and all those developments on Michigan Avenue, you don't think about, well, how many. Does each one of those restaurants sell liquor or any type of alcohol, right? Uh, we just really look at the ones with the words that say that.
Right. So grocery stores are also a factor, sit-down restaurants are also a factor, so. I just, I guess I'm just saying, like, I, I think as part of a a major decision body or planning commission. That, you know, we're trying to just make sure that whatever we're doing, it fits with the vision of our city. And what decisions we make now will impact any decisions we have in the future.
But to your point, when a grocery store, God willing, does come and a nice restaurant, and another, they're all gonna want liquor.
Right.
Because that's how they're gonna succeed. Um, we're all gonna help each other. It's, and you know, once that happens, you know, let's say the moratorium has lifted a year, year and a half later. And someone else gets a gas station on liquor, it's just gonna, you know, hurt his business a little bit, but that's that's just the way it is. It's just business and competition. Any grocery store, mini-market, restaurant is always gonna want liquor, beer and wine to be successful.
I was gonna say, in this explanatory position, we'll have to look at what the surrounding communities did, if they did anything as well. Um, our unique situation that we always talk about, even with the adult foster care homes, is because we're not landlocked. And because there are vacancies of of a multitude of businesses out there, and zoning is what they always usually say, well. Use that as the natural buffer, but um. You, that's, that the zoning has to be for the whole city, though, you know, how you do. Anyway, um, that's something to really look at. Cities of our size, how they may have, may not have done it, how we could take and implement some things in there, too. Well, let's turn it over to the general public for now, and allow anybody from the public to approach the podium and speak, and uh, come right on up. And then we'll come on back to planning commission, any further comments, questions or concerns.
I don't know. Here, here.
Just get up to the podium and state your name, sir. Oh, come to the, right there to the microphone for me.
My name is Reverend George Williams. Um, I I'm trying to get a, think of what's going on here, okay? Uh, I know I, I. I know I can't hardly hear you, nobody's talking. Okay, real good, because I I guess the mics are not working or whatever, but what I'm trying to do is ask. Couldn't get feel the feel of the location. Okay, and what you trying to put there? Uh, somebody's trying to put something there, I I hear, I hear some people talking. Not, oh, so I'm just trying to figure it out before I make my statement.
So this particular location, we are on the second public hearing. This one is for two six one seven Middle Belt, that's the corner of Michigan Avenue, Middle Belt, where Brothers Towing used to be. And.
Where, where?
Brothers Towing, the gas station that was no longer a gas station, but they just repaired the cars, right there at Middle Belt and Michigan Avenue.
Brothers.
Bacon building, right there.
Brothers.
Right there on the.
Repair shop, Brothers Repair Shop.
So the.
Can you give me the pros and cons about what you're talking about now?
Yeah, this particular group of applicants is looking to um, open it up as a gas station, but also applying for a. Special land use and ability, in an ability to sell liquor, beer and wine. So that's what we were talking about back and forth. And then some of my colleagues here have spoke about the amount that's in the community already. And basically, why would we add another one into that count, being that we're only six square miles? So that's, that's what was going on about this one, but this is the second public hearing.
Okay, because I, 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 I just can't hear like I used to.
And it's okay, we've actually spoken, uh, a couple of us on city council about that with these omnidirectional mics versus the goos next. And the audience letting us know they can't really hear us out there, so it's something that's in the works to try to improve that.
Well, they're talking about the old gas station where the brothers used to be at?
Yes, sir.
Are they not correcting on the mandatory, made that just for, without this pass? Gas stations?
Gas stations, repair shops is.
Gas stations, they say nothing about restaurants and.
Oh, no.
None of that, no. It's just a gas station to keep it in line. What were we trying to do?
That's correct.
Yeah.
Alrighty, was there anyone else from the general public who wishes to speak at this time about uh, two six one seven Middle Belt? Right here in the C N O movement, commissioners turning it back over to us. I just wanted to provide the um, general public an opportunity to speak. If I may. Go right ahead, Mr. Dado.
Um, the gas station is also special land use.
Okay.
So it's, it's, it's two special land use, the, the, for the gas station, as well as the alcohol, so. So theoretically, you could vote on, on one and not the other, but.
Can we also table one to kind of get some of the feedback from the attorneys we were speaking about? With the alcohol and business part? So like, for example, today, could we. Recommend uh, to go to city council with the approval of the gas station, but then table the special land use for the alcohol. Pending that we can get some feedback from the attorney about some of the things that were recommended by like Commissioner Hayes Rappert.
So you can do that. We've done it in the past where. I don't think something that we received was in fullness from the applicant, but in an effort not to hinder them. We approved the site plan and everything, and then we tabled the special land use to come back to us on a certain day. Uh, whether it was the second Monday of the month. Or the fourth Monday of the month, because remember, we used to have second and fourth Monday meetings, but we kind of condensed that, but that Monday is still open if we need to call a special meeting. Uh, but yes, we have done that in the past, so it's however you know, you do decide to make that motion.
Okay, cuz I would like to get the information about what our cap is for liquor licenses that we could actually issue as a city. I'm sure there's a state. Guidance on that or something. I don't know if that's just zoning in ordinance. But then to her point, maybe we could also get feedback from the attorney about whether or not. Um, we can put some of those thresholds in place prior to.
Yeah, that's fine. Um, and I was gonna ask just real quick, cuz Mr. Dado, you had said. In theory, it's two special land uses for this location, cuz the gas station needs one, but liquor is, well, are these just combined into one special land use? Or does it need two separate votes for the special land uses?
It depends on how you wanna to do it.
I'll just ask it for clarity purposes, cuz I know the other day with the convenience store, they only needed a special land use because of the liquor. And so that, I just wanted that clarity, okay?
But the convenience store is a by right use in that, that zone.
Right.
Where, where these two items are, both require special land.
Got you, okay. Um.
It would have to be broken down into two separate uh.
Yeah, special land uses.
You, for clarity purposes, if you wanted to do that, to be on the safe side, yes, if you, even right now. Um, from how I'm looking at it, you could correct us if we're wrong. If you say you wanted to approve the site plan, that's, that is actually, um. Let's make this clear real quick. I know we had kind of sort of went through this at the last meeting as well, and I think we had to in the, in the far past, so. It says there's a preliminary site plan review. For item um, B under new business, so site plans. Usually is, do we do this already? Already looking at the site plan?
Yeah, we did.
Oh, so that's approved already, right?
We didn't, we didn't. Because they had to, they had to amend their application to include the liquor.
Alright.
We, we got tabled last time to come here because we added the verbiage for.
For the special land use.
And and of course, we respect any decision you guys make tonight, but we prefer not to get tabled on the, on the liquor part, because you wanna speak to the attorneys, cuz. For what Jason said, he's okay to put some sort of percentage plus minus on how much liquor. I'm just afraid, I know what the attorney's gonna say. He's gonna say, there is no way we can impose a percentage, but we're willing to work with the planning commission for that percentage. Because we still have to go in front of council and get approved and construction documents, and we're getting into the months where we wanna try to start construction if approved.
Okay.
Preferably.
I think in that case, and you all, like I said, it's however you make the motion, we would have three different votes. This site plan vote is one, that's approved solely by us. A special land use for the uh, gas station, if you will, and I'm just paraphrasing right now. That's a second one. That would be, of course, a recommendation to city council, whether it's approval or denial. And then the third one would be for the liquor, beer and wine sales. Another recommendation to city council approval or denial with whatever language this body decides to impose. And then that way, we could still go through, so if, and then city council will have the verbiage, we could still get the information. And then we can also tell city council, X, Y and Z about the information that is received. Because once it leaves here, the conversation doesn't have to stop.
Right.
Uh, it could continue, it's just.
It can be supplemental to the, to, to, to our, our, our vote.
Yeah, cuz we, again, we don't have a final say so, but we wanna make sure that however it goes out of here, we.
They have the most information that they need to make a, a, a bound decision.
Exactly, and then you can start bringing it up on city council's radar immediately, so it's not one of those things where, um. Say those are the nights you work or whatever the case may be, and you can't make it to the meeting and actually speak. You can start telling the city council, hey, before you even get your package, this is coming down the pipeline, blah, 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 blah. Don't get to the, please don't get to the meeting and start asking the same questions we didn't ask already.
Right, yeah.
Alright, so that, that was this public hearing. So we got those three votes, remember those three votes will be under new business.
Gotcha, okay.
Um, so that'd be like item A, B, C, D, E. And I guess that's something we're just going forward, have to kind of keep in the back of our minds when we're at adoption of the agenda, just so we make sure we got it down pat. But it was great to bring that out there in public hearing. Alright, if all minds are satisfied.
Sure, it's A, B, C, D and E, A, B, was, I have case. Twenty five oh one and twenty five oh three, then you got the site plan.
For case.
The special land use and the liquor.
Yeah, well, no, the site plan is one.
Gas station is another.
The gas station is another, and the third one is liquor, beer and wine.
Right.
You, I see what you're saying, it should be A, B, C, D.
Right.
My math is off. Cool, so A, B, C, D, got you. Okay. Alrighty, if all minds are satisfied, and we have no one else from the general public that wishes to speak to these matters. The floor is open for a motion to close the public hearing for item B.
I move that we close the public hearing for item B.
I support.
It's been properly moved and supported. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes. Public hearing is now closed. We're now on to item six unfinished business. I don't believe we have any. It moves us right along to item number seven, new business. Case number, or item A, case number two five dash zero one, text amendment to allow vehicle repair facility. Major as a permitted use within the B three general business district. The floor is open for a motion. Or I'm sorry, Mr. Dado, you wanna go back with a brief synopsis really quickly and. We're ready back on page.
The brief synopsis is that, um, we, we, we took, um. Major uh, automotive repair out of B three. It's allowed in M one, and based on some of our, our findings. We already have at least, at least five, uh, I know, um, A C Williams said that she's, he had seven. She counted, um, automotive related things that are on Michigan Avenue, and uh. Based on with the moratorium and things of that nature, um. The planning commission, the planning department kind of recommended, um, denial, because we're oversaturated with those reasons. But that's just based on what we, we, we looked at.
I also think it's important to state those reasons, um, the moratorium and the future land use plan and the fact that we're updating our ordinance. I think are also, could be related, you know, for the record as to why we would recommend denial. I think that's important.
Yeah, and then should we look at the areas that we are affecting? Areas what we talking about, where we got mountains here, but we don't have nothing here, so. It's, it's, if, up in there.
Okay. So as a brief synopsis, floor is open for a motion.
For a motion that we deny the text amendment to allow vehicle repair facility major as a permitted use within B three general business district. Based on the reasons we just stated.
It's been properly moved and supported. Further discussion. Mr. Davis, you were saying about looking at, I'm sorry, Commissioner Davis, other areas that are what?
Areas that was affected, like we were saying, what he talking about, it's nothing there.
Oh, I see.
Not in that area there. The building was there existing, the building was doing this before. And then something changed with the B three area with that, but it should be something viable there, because. You're not gonna see McDonald's, nothing else coming to that area, so why not let them have. Uh, quit the facility, repair facility. That's what it was at first, it's one right next door to it. It's one at the very beginning.
Well, I, I will respond to that by saying that that's one of the top priorities listed in our master plan, is that we repurpose.
Right.
Those buildings for a different use, and so we have a strategy or strategic plan also in the master plan. And we can even break that down even further if we want to say specifically what types of businesses we want there. But that would be my response to that, that, that the top priority for residents is that. We don't leave them empty, but we repurpose them for something else other than auto.
And if I may, um, minor is, is a special land use in there. It could be repurposed for minor uses. But that's, that's a decision of the, the applicant, though. Theoretically, they, they could have applied for special land use for the minor auto repairs.
Oh, I see what you're saying. So minor is still, is still accepted and just not major. And I, and just, you know, I'm sitting here, I'm listening to everybody, um, and taking into all the considerations, we. Some of us have talked about this beforehand, we got clarity on the addresses and things of that nature, where, what all was gonna where, um. And I, you know, I see it from both sides, right? Because, of course, we all grew up out here, saw it as a repair shop before. Many of us probably went there for collision works, or parents, grandparents did, so on and so forth, um. And I know in the past, and I'm just looking at this, and I don't know if you all are privy to it or not. It did, that whole area had got repurposed for, or rezoned, I should say, for entertainment, there was like an overlay. That never really fell through, um, and then, trying to remember what else.
Yeah, because, and I think the other factor in that particular air, um, for that particular building is. That, that building sits quite a bit off, off Michigan Avenue, doesn't it? All the long way back off, so I mean, I don't know. I'm kind of with Daryl, what else could you even repurpose that building for? Cuz it's so far off of Michigan Avenue. You know?
And, 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 and I, and I guess it's, it's difficult, you know, to really. See the future, right? We're not afford to tell us anything like that, but we do look at those different things that are down there, too, right? And some of us will say, well, you got strip clubs, marijuana right there. I'm not moving over there, but then we do got some apartments smack dab in the middle that haven't been re- redeveloped yet, um. And when I say marijuana, I'm talking about a dispensary, my apologies, um. So it's, it's just hit or miss, cuz some of us may or may not have an issue with it, you know, say, oh, they closed at a certain time, and I'm fine with it, they're not hanging out all night, then some may not. Same thing with, um, liquor stores and everything like that, but I, I do see it from both, and I'm just. Trying to wrap my mind around the thought, now that we're thinking about that, what else, you know, would go there? Would it be repurposed and how fast?
And what he said, like, we was reading out what, what the major minor repair was, a engine replaced, it's major. So it's a major, taking the engine out compared to minor, taking the engine out.
Well, minor, you can't take out the engine. Minor is, is generally oil changes, radiator changes, things of that.
Body pump shot, but it's no bump in the face like it was, that's major. So it was major now, it's not even permitted in that area now.
Right, and once, once it closed, it lost its, its, um, knock and forth.
Grandfather clause.
And question with, with that, and it's just me now, you're talking about minor, major, is that our definition, or is that like state definition of major and major?
That's our definition.
That's our definition, okay.
I, I think that if we, I'm not exactly sure what some of the due diligence is prior to purchasing some of these properties. Other than just seeing that it was something that was maybe auto in this example before. And we are familiar with auto, so we're gonna buy it again, and perhaps they didn't realize it wasn't even zoned for that. But I could also see if someone who maybe purchased it with something else in mind and came to our table and presented us with that idea. We would be open to it. I, I don't want us to say like, oh, we're, let's just do it, cuz that's what it was before. You know, cuz I think if someone came as an applicant and was like, we bought this. Say like, oh, we're, let's just do it, cause that's what it was before, you know, cause I think if someone came as an applicant and was like, we bought this building. And this is what we wanna do with it, and it was something completely different. We'd be like, oh, it's great, especially if it was envisioned with what we wanted, so you know.
Unfortunately, we we have a lot of that. Buy it and then they find out they can't do what they.
We do offer.
We at right now.
You said we do offer a.
What's called a zoning ordinance letter, and um it there is a fee, but but if you're gonna pay thousands of dollars for something, you could pay a couple. Dollars to to make sure that what you choose to to use is what you'll be allowed to use.
And city council did ask for a process to be implemented, but it only gets triggered when you buy city property.
That that option is is open to the public. So we've had people come in and then I explained to them, well, you know, that's that's nice what you're proposing to do, but unfortunately, that's not in that zoning. And then I have, I give them the options of you can go for a text amendment, you can look for somewhere, you know, well, it's allowed in this this district, but it's not allowed in that district. So uh that's the the P P R.
My thing that we keep delving our land out in this fashion. We will never be able to make changes, we'll never be able to. Increase our vision of what we have in the city, because if we just just tunnel vision for what's already existing.
I got you.
You know what I'm saying?
I had a question, two things that came up that I'm thinking about it now, I don't know how many times you all been here during council meetings when the train go past Amtrak every Monday. Okay, so I'm I'm immune to it now. I I'll just wonder, cause I know that is right next to the uh to the uh hmm. To behind the collision shop. The smart bus terminal is back there as well. So I was just thinking about that, I didn't, I and I know we asked this before the different business. As far as um noise goes and stuff like that, cause with major, there might come some noise. Um, the do you know um Commissioner Davis, does Smart make a lot of noise back there?
Need to be able to pay for up to building that road back up, ain't a bunch of noise. With all the heavy equipment. Able to help put that road back together instead of complaining, that's. Well, that's another story, let's go.
I swung some asphalt back there, white hair, so, okay. I was just, I was just wondering, cause I didn't know exactly what they did inside of the entity, even though it's on the other side of railroad tracks, so I was just curious. Okay, um again, we were in the middle of discussion. The vote recommendation was to deny.
The text amendment.
Okay, and you wanted to add what language in there as well, uh. You said some options.
Not for the text amendment. For the other case.
Got you, alright. Um, okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? All opposed? Nay, so that's two, three. So that was two in favor of the denial recommendation and three not in favor, correct? Okay, I just wanted to make sure. So that, I'm sorry. That is a text amendment.
Yes, that was to deny the text amendment to allow vehicle repair facility major as a permitted use. So you're still on the nay side.
Yeah, I got you, I just wanted to make, cause I'm, I started talking about recommendation to city council. And I started mixing up mentally, so I didn't confuse anybody, right? Okay, alright. Now Mister Dowdell, does this still go to city council? Is this the text amendment?
Uh, yes.
Yes, it does, okay. So, alright. We're down to item B, case number two, five dash zero, three, um two, six, one, seven, middle belt. Remember, guys, this is the one where we talked about having three different votes here, site plan review and then two special land uses. So the first one is for the preliminary site plan review. And again, this is for automobile. Well, I'm just gonna say gas station. Yes, site plan review for the gas station, and then the the next would be automobile service station, and the next will be liquor, beer, and wine sales in the B three. You all let me know what type of language you need.
It's gonna be a gas station. And a store.
You calling a service station, it's the gas.
That's our, that's our text definition, it's automobile service stations, gas station.
You don't wanna help anybody, full service, alright. So this is, so this is just a preliminary site plan review for.
For the gas station.
Automobile service.
Or the automobile service station. Yeah, but not a repair, not a repair.
So with the site plan, there were a few things that that discrepancies, we needed a photometric plan, uh the the canopy details. A security plan and. Final site plan will be required. Most of those things can be done administratively. Then if it's if approved in the site plan, the final site plan will be the next, the final step after.
Well, right now, the the language could be to move to approve the site plan with the requirements recommended by planning director.
Is there support? They're properly moved and supported, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? All opposed? Motion passes. Alrighty, so now we're down. Yep.
For the alcohol.
Mobile station, I'm sorry.
I gotta relook at these text.
So like, we recommend the approval of the special land use for the automobile service station.
It's been, I'm sorry, I should have said the floor is open for a motion, I said the paper, but yes, uh it's been properly moved and supported, is there for, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? All opposed? Motion passes. For that special land use, so that's two, now we have the third one.
This is the wordy one.
Liquor, beer, and wine at the state automobile. You know, service station.
With? The approval of whatever this language is.
The approval of the language and.
With the city council.
Talking with him or agreeing with some approval, but so that's gotta be with the.
So he's making the motion, someone can second it, and then we could talk in the discussion about how he wanna amend this. Or what language you want to add it, so is there a second? It's been properly moved and seconded, discussion.
So we're, this is a motion to recommend to city council, yea or nay on the special land use for alcohol sales, correct?
With, and then we're adding this language pertaining to if we can. Yeah, if if.
Which I would say probably with the following conditions or something.
Okay, so motion to approve with following conditions, and this is a recommendation to city council.
And that is to um to have the our legal team determine.
Whether we're correct on that.
And le- limiting the expansion.
Or coming up with a reasonable amount of space that will be of of allowed for the liquor component.
So let's kinda uh condense it, so this is a. Recommendation to city council with the following conditions. With. Confirming with the city attorney if we can apply regulations of alcohol sales within a business.
Or would it be recommendation of alcohol sale or recommendation to the amount of.
No, but just what he just said.
I see what you're saying, you you further, I was using regulations as a general term, but if you wanna make it more specific.
Well, yeah, because I think the question really was to. What, how much liquor are they gonna go? Fifteen percent in the beginning, then go fifty, I mean, we understood that the pros and cons of the service, but I think that's what. Commissioner Bradford uh was saying, that we, you know, wanna know.
But agreement between the city and them.
You can come up, you can come up.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but from the way I understood it was, you you wanted to place a limit of the amount of floor space dedicated. Yeah, for the sale of liquor.
That's what y'all.
Very good.
Thank you.
No problem.
You're hired.
Need city council approval for that.
Well, yeah, that that's 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 that was the concern.
That was concern.
Yeah, where the where it, you know, like I said, right now. And of course, and I, you know, like I said, anybody seventeen percent profit on it, and it's not a lot, but it's it's a draw, so we wanna make sure that. You don't have fifty percent of it liquor and then the rest, you know.
Got you.
Come to a happy medium.
I thought she stated out that if somewhere along the future, they did, they wanna become a all out gas station liquor store.
Right, right, right.
Okay, man her up one more time?
So I have no problem, no issue with that limitation, but it was kind of a dress through the minimum. Amount of inventory that we have to have that excludes liquor, because you know, we only have twenty seven hundred square feet. So if we have to have two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of merchandise that excludes alcoholic beverages. Then, and we only have twenty seven hundred square feet, that's a lot of, you know, a lot of merchandise for such a small space, so we'd be limited on how much. We would be able to space, we'd be able to allocate the liquor.
To stand from my vantage.
I I have no problem with with your.
You, I'm the building. You can add on to that building.
I I don't think we can, we we don't have enough space to add on, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, Mister Dowdell, do, can we? There's setbacks, there's all the different kinda stuff.
You can't add on because of the circulation for the fuel pumps and the location of the fuel tanks that are more to the south. It's impossible to add on to more than, otherwise I would have went to three and four thousand, of course, we're trying to buy the lot next door. So we can have gas station, strip mall, more pumps, nicer, bigger. But there just wasn't, you know, they weren't seven, but we can't add on to this thing, and once you build this thing, you're not adding on.
But but again, you guys do whatever you like, I I'm not trying to, you know.
But again, I I and I respect and understand what he's what he's stating here, but. Again, I think once the, that language does still need to exist for the simple fact is. Once you figure out what your square footage, final square footage is gonna be, then it could be a number, well, well, okay, you can't go past. Twenty percent of the of 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 your storage space, so I mean, I think there has to be a number established. That's what I think, you know, I think the question is.
So limit the floor step space available for liquor.
To a point, I mean, like I said.
With an agreed, what we agree about.
You're saying basically approve with the following condition to limit the amount of the force placed at twenty percent?
It has to be an agreed upon number. I mean, twenty percent may.
Well, what we're, what we're doing in this recommendation in like a compromise. We're also inquiring with the city attorney if that's even something legal for us to do.
And if it is something we can do, then an agreed upon amount, a number, a a percentage.
Well, legal to recommend, let me put it that way, cause again, city council had a final say, so and that's why I said initiate the conversations. But Mister Dowdell and and or myself or whoever, you know, we'll reach out to the legal team, put that on their radar. And then let them know this is what came out of planning commission, it's going to city council.
That as as a planning commission, we have a question, that's a question, i- is it even possible, cause it may not be possible. And then we're just, we're just shooting air now, but I'm just saying, but we wanna know if it's possible.
But like you said also, the council has to follow say, they they can say, yes, we.
But at least we've done our job.
Exactly, and provided them with the most information so that they can make the most sound decision.
Any further discussion, guys? Alright, hearing none, all in favor? All opposed? Motion passes, so. Thank you, um we're down to miscellaneous, do we have anything for miscellaneous? No, no, Commissioner Wayne? Oh, okay, finally, that's how I saw your blue package, so.
Oh, um, this is me just referencing our master plan.
What about, you said something about R R C stuff.
Oh, um, y'all, we almost there. So we just got two major things left, and that's the C I P or capital improvements plan. Um, which when I spoke with our engineer, uh Carrie, she said that that was essentially done the numbers, they just have to put it in a narrative of sorts. Um, and it doesn't have to be a particularly long narrative, it could be like ten pages, just explaining what the numbers mean. Um, and then the other thing is zoning ordinance, and so that's a decent of itself. But hopefully, we can get it done by the summer, and then once they approve all of that, we can be R R C certified.
Alright, that's awesome, congratulations, great, great.
Well, I had the time in the day, like when you're actually working on this stuff.
Me, I fit it in between my regular job, like, so either I'm honestly either working on it in the evenings. Or before I get started at work or on the weekends.
Got you.
Yeah, so it's it's busy, I'm busy, that's for sure. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Anybody else from miscellaneous? Alrighty. Excuse me, we're down to item number, item nine. Um, second hearing of the public for items not scheduled for a public hearing or on the agenda, so this would be the public comment. From anybody from the general audience, which is who addressed this body. Hearing is seeing no movement, we're down to item ten, adjournment. Properly moved and supported, all in favor? All opposed?
Meeting guy. If I do find some time between now and next meeting, um.